Hello everyone and welcome to today's Town Hall with Texas Children's Hospital and our wonderful team at in Houston. I want to welcome you as your Director of Family Empowerment at Rett syndrome.org. On behalf of our staff and all of our Board of Directors, we are so pleased to have you with us today, engaging in Rett syndrome. We know we have a lot of things competing for our time and energy right now. And yet, Rett syndrome was a priority for us prior to all of the current situations and will continue to be an ongoing need in our homes. So I'm really glad to be with you as your representative at ret syndrome.org and representing everybody at our foundation. And I'm very, very pleased to have with us all of our wonderful team at Texas Children's Hospital, who is doing both care and clinical research on your behalf. So I want to give a few housekeeping information about how go-to webinar works in case this is the first time you're joining us. So don't worry about background noise. You are automatically muted. Your webcams are off. We have all of the questions that you have pre-submitted at the time of registration and we'll be answering those questions at the end of our slide presentation today. If anything comes to mind as we go through our material, go ahead and type it into the chat box and we'll address those questions again at the end. Also, don't worry about taking notes because we will be recording the session and you'll receive a link to the recording within the next day or two. And we encourage you to share this link with your pediatrician, your primary care physicians, anyone on your care team or in your circle of family, friends, educators and therapists who might benefit from hearing this information. Okay, so we have a lot of ground to cover today. So in the interest of time, I'd like to go ahead and get started. But again, before we do, I really want to give a special thanks to our team at Texas Children's. We know that you've had a lot of, a lot of things really challenging you this summer as you have prepared for many issues, some that have come to reality. For the most part, many have not, but it did require a lot of change in the way you practice medicine, in the way you see your, your patients. And we really appreciate the fact that despite all of the reasons that you could have folded up shop and gone home, you didn't, you've stayed there for us. And we're looking forward to hearing how things are a little bit different, but ongoing for you at Texas Children's. So what I'd like to do now is go ahead and turn the presentation over to Dr. Glaze. Dr. Glaze is going to kick us off with what's going on at the clinic today. So Dr. Glaze, if you go ahead, oh, there you are.
There I am. Thank you. If we can have my first slide?
You bet.
Okay, thank you very much Paige. From all of our team in Houston, we want to thank Paige and the RSO for inviting us to this Town Hall session. And especially, thanks for supporting us and helping us accomplish many things. As you all know, I'm the Medical Director of the Bluebird Circle Rett Center. This center has been in operation for nearly 30 years. And when it was, when we first conceived of the center, we conceived that it would primarily do three things. One, provide clinical care for individuals with Rett syndrome. Number two, be a educational resource for families, for physicians, for other healthcare people involved in the care of individuals with Rett syndrome. And three, that it would undertake research to understand better what Rett syndrome was about. And hopefully to come to a point where we would actually be able to initiate treatment trials. Well, as you all know, a lot of things have changed and we've experienced a number of changes at the Rett Center over the last year or two. To emphasize that change, could I have the next slide Paige? Please? Oh, that's right. This picture is from about 10 years ago. It's actually was taken at Red Camp, which has been a yearly event, at which time parents, their daughters with Rett syndrome and many of us of our team get together, talk about what's going on, address questions. As you can see, no mask, everyone close, everyone friendly. So a big change has been that we're no longer able to do that. There have been a number of other changes in our center, in our team. And Paige, if I could have the next slide? One of those changes, there are a lot of new faces. And hopefully later we'll be able to show those new faces during the panel discussion. But if you call the number, the number hasn't changed. It's still the same Rett number as shown in the slide. But if you call, you're actually going to get the call answered by Daniella, who is responsible for appointments, for providing information, for getting you to the person you need to answer your questions. In addition, we have two new nurses, Mariah and Mohamed. And they are the ones responsible for the day-to-day care of our patients. They may be also involved in research efforts. And primarily they keep me on track to make sure that I'm doing what I should be doing. They find me when you want to find me. We still have Dr. Motil, who's great, who is with us and who will talk after I finish. Dr. Suter is with us and many of you know him. In addition, we have a third physician, Devut Palavan. Dr. Palavan is a child neurologist, but also expert in clinical and molecular genetics and provides that expertise to our center. Additionally, we have a number of individuals involved in our research efforts. Led, the research team is led by Debbie Verrara, who is the nurse management manager of the research team. But the team also includes Amy, Nabil, Mallory and Francis involved in different research projects that are going on. So this has been a significant change in the operation of the, of the center. And we hope that you get to know everyone listed here. And again, all of them are here to help your daughters and you in all ways possible. Another change has been, over the years, we've recognized that a number of disorders have similar features to Rett syndrome, but are, have different mutations as the basis for the neurogenetic disorder. And that means that we've expanded our clinic from just being a purely Rett clinic to Metp2 related disorder clinic. It includes other disorders, including CDKL5, FoxG1, Metp2 duplication syndrome. And so we see a broad range of patients, including Rett syndrome and these other disorders. Our experience has been about over 1,000 individuals who've been seen in the clinic and 300 to 500 individuals followed more actively every year or twice a year as needed. As Paige has said, there have been a number of challenges and one of the challenges has been to our research efforts. We have continued to enroll individuals and see individuals in the natural history study. But we often are seeing them in a different way. While we can see them in person, we often will see them remotely by audio/video means, just as we're doing this Town Hall today. This process actually changed. So in January and February, we had initiated a number of treatment trials. But by March, we were unable to continue seeing patients in person. And many of those treatment trials were shut down for a brief period of time. Somewhat later in March and April, we again began initiating the treatment trials again. And currently, we are undertaking a number of treatment trials, but we are doing it by remotely, by audio/video means. Just as we do our clinic interactions with families and with their daughters and sons. The treatment trials that are going on now, some of them have been actually completed. This includes this Rosinin study, which you all know has been discontinued because the findings indicated that there was no efficacy demonstrated by the trial. And so the trial is no longer going on. Trial for CDKL5 gonaxalon has been completed and Dr. Suter will have more information about the outcome of that trial. The GW study can about dial is still on hold. We're hoping in the next week or two, the sponsor GW is going to allow remote visits and, and we're going to be able to again enroll patients in that trial. The Trefenatide trial is ongoing and we are currently enrolling patients, screening patients, enrolling them in the double-blind study as well as on completion of that into the open label trial and ability for everyone to actually get Trefenatide if they have been in the double-blind study. No matter if they've been on placebo or if they've actually got a Trefenatide for that study. Another study that we've actually completed is ANAVX2, in which older patients beyond age 18 years were enrolled in. That enrollment has been completed and the analysis, the analysis of that data will be ongoing for that study. And finally, a study that we're all interested in is a study that was sponsored by, has been sponsored and continues to be sponsored by Avexis. And the name of Avexis has changed. And that will be forthcoming and news brief about that. But it's still the same effort and Avexis is developing a treatment for restoration of the mutation of the Metp2 gene. And the hope is that that study will get up and running in spring or early summer of next year. And that will be enrolling young patients under five years of age in that study. But we're very excited about being in that, being able to do that study and enrolling our young patients that we see in the center in that study. Can I have the next slide? Well, many things came to a standstill or have changed in our center. One thing that hasn't changed is October is Rett Awareness Month. And this is the proclamation that we've recently received from the Governor of Texas, Greg Abbott. And we will celebrate in some way Rett awareness. And Daniella has arranged to have our banner up and we hope to have this framed and up on, on the walkway where we usually have Rett awareness. We just won't be able to have the usual events going on. And I have a lot of people and music and things like that. But we will recognize that it is Rett Awareness Month, starting tomorrow. And we will celebrate that as, as we're best able to make sure that all individuals at the Texas Children's Hospital, all care providers and staff there are aware that it is Rett Awareness Month. So things have changed, but I think we're up and, and running and our research studies have started again. We're still seeing patients and scheduling patients and doing that by remote audio/video means. So I want to reassure you, if you do have questions, do call the Rett Center. If you need to be seen, we can see you either by remotely or we can actually see you in person. In those cases where an in-person visit is going to be required and most helpful. To tell you more about what's going on at the Rett Center, we have Dr. Motil and Dr. Suter here. And I'd like to invite Dr. Motil to tell us about her current research efforts and what she has accomplished over the last year and what she's going to be doing in the coming year. So Kay, why don't you go ahead and get, get started?
Thank you, Dr. Glaze, and good afternoon to everyone who is tuned in to this Town Hall. I have two projects that I want to share with you. Many of you have helped us to complete these particular studies. The first one is our microbiome and metabolome project in Rett syndrome. May I have the next slide, please Paige? So we know that animal studies suggest changes in the gut bacteria can affect both the central nervous system as well as the enteric nervous system and their functions. We think that the altered gut microbiome might in fact underlie some of the dysfunction, the intestinal dysfunction that we see in Rett syndrome. So as many of you know, we actually was funded by RSO and we did a study that looked at the gut microbiome. We had 44 of our girls participate and we had 21 girls who were unaffected with Rett syndrome participate as well. In those studies, we did a number of things, including collecting stool samples. And we took a lot of information about what the girls were eating, their heights and weights and their medications that they were also using. And a lot of their clinical characteristics were also recorded. May I have the next slide, please? This slide summarizes some of the information that we have about the gut microbiome. One of the questions we asked was, is the gut microbiome different between girls who have Rett syndrome and those who are unaffected? If you look at the colored panels in this particular slide, the gut bacteria are classified into various different kinds of groups. The largest group is what is called a phylum. A middle grouping is called the family. And the final group is called the genus. The girls who have Rett syndrome are always listed in the right panel. And the girls who do not have Rett syndrome are always listed in the left panel. When we compared girls with Rett syndrome against those who do not have Rett syndrome, the gut microbiota did not appear to be very different. Some of these color coatings, however, can be a bit deceptive. And although we didn't have the appearance of significant differences between the two groups, when we really look at some of the finer detail, I think you can appreciate in some of these panels, there are subtle differences in the width of the color bands, suggesting that perhaps we might really have some differences between the groups of girls. But we really need to be studying a lot more individuals. May I have the next slide, please? This slide summarizes the differences in our girls with Rett syndrome alone before puberty and after puberty in the right, in the left and the right-hand panels that you see on this slide. When we looked at the girls with Rett syndrome alone as a group, based on their pubertal status before and after their menstrual cycles started, we found that there were very clear differences in the gut microbiota. So you can clearly see in these two panels, the color-coded differences of the bands of different kinds of bacteria. They are very clearly different. Some are larger, some are actually different color codes. So one of the things that we do know is that depending on the age of your daughters, there are indeed differences in the bacterial population of the gastrointestinal tract. May I have the next slide, please? This slide summarizes the difference again in our girls with Rett syndrome based on the clinical severity score. We grouped our girls as mild and moderately affected based on their clinical severity score versus in the right-hand panel, those girls who were more severely affected based on their clinical severity score. And once again, we found that there were differences based on how affected the girls were in our particular study. Again, you can see the differences in the color coding. Some bars being larger or smaller for different groups of bacteria. And some bars being actually quite difficult to find in the color coding. So what we now know is that within our girls, there are differences in the bacterial population based on their pubertal status and based on their clinical severity scores. We know that there are other differences that affect the girls. I've not shown you the particular slides. But for sure, we know that the diet will affect the bacterial distribution in the gut. We still don't know, we can't make a connection yet between whether the way your daughters are affected in terms of their gastrointestinal symptoms. We don't know yet whether the bacteria clearly influence some of those symptoms. But we do know that the gut bacteria differ in different groups of girls. And so we may be able, as we study more, how these bacteria can influence the gastrointestinal symptoms that we know the girls have. May I have the next slide, please? We clearly are going to move forward with more microbiome studies in our girls. And so we want to do a couple of things. One is we know that we have a number of different options in terms of the types of foods we provide the girls. And so that might be one place that we will look and further explore. We also know that the microbiome is thought to affect behavior. And so we'd like to take a look and see how the microbiome correlates with some of the different behavioral attributes that the girls have. The next slide, please. Will summarize another study that many of you have participated in. And that's the gastrointestinal health questionnaire that we asked you to fill out. When we first started this study, we know that many of the drug trials failed to ask questions about the gastrointestinal tract. And in fact, the gastrointestinal symptoms at times seem to be more debilitating than even some of the neurological problems. So we have often asked the drug studies, the companies to consider how we could use a questionnaire as an outcome measure of a drug's, drug's effect on your daughters. May I have the next slide, please? We know that 95% of our girls and young women with Rett develop various gastrointestinal problems. And as I've said, their problems really may be more debilitating than some of the neurological issues that the girls have. From our study that we have just received notice, we're going to be published, we know that our gastrointestinal health questionnaire is a valid clinical outcomes measure of GI health in Rett syndrome. May I have the next slide, please? The questionnaire is, is an investigation that actually asks parents about their daughter's gastrointestinal health and pain, the medications or surgical inventions, interventions that may have been applied, some of the mood and behaviors that your daughters have and your concerns. The questionnaire is designed as a Likert scale, which means that you get to pick a number from zero to four that characterizes what you think about your daughter's symptoms. And those thoughts range from, oh, my daughter never has symptoms to, oh, my daughter always has symptoms. In the particular study that we just finished, we had 93 parents of girls with Rett syndrome fill out the questionnaire. And we had 27 parents of unaffected girls fill out questionnaires as well. May I have the next slide, please? This slide summarizes the responses that we calculated from the questionnaire. Across the bottom of the slide, you can see the different groupings. So the total gastrointestinal symptoms, the symptoms of health and pain, eating characteristics, so the chew and swallow measures, the amount of reflux, gas bloating, constipation or diarrhea, the mood and behaviors, parent concerns, and the total score in the entirety of the questionnaire. The blue columns represent our girls with Rett syndrome and the orange columns represent the girls who were unaffected. And I think from this slide, you can very clearly see that we have very clear distinct differences that demonstrate the acuity of symptoms is much higher in our girls with Rett syndrome compared to those girls who do not have Rett syndrome. May I have the next slide, please? So I think we want to move forward with our questionnaire. We need a large number of girls and their parents to participate because we really do have to validate that our gastrointestinal health questionnaire as a clinical biomarker of gastrointestinal health fits the bill for our clinics all across the country. And then we want to move forward and use our questionnaire in our children who have other Metp2 related disorders because we think it too may be a valid clinical biomarker of gastrointestinal health in a number of these other disorders and particularly as they relate to clinical trials that will eventually come for these other disorders. So I hope this brings up to date, some of our, our studies up to date for those of you, particularly for those of you who have participated. You often ask, what do studies tell us? And so we want to share some of our preliminary findings. And in, in our latter study, of course, our, our publication that will be coming out in the near future. We are always, always, always appreciative of all of you who do volunteer your time and your efforts because without you, we actually cannot move forward. We actually cannot move forward. And we know that over the number of years for all of you who have participated in our studies. It is all of you who have helped to move this field forward and we would not be where we are today in trying to help your daughters. Live a healthy life without your input. So having said all of that and my thank you to all of you. I would now like to announce Dr. Suter's. Visit with you and. Let him share with you some of the information that he has. Thank you.
Hello and welcome everyone who is participating. This is Dr. Suter and I apologize you'll. Unfortunately, just have to believe that it is Dr. Suter because I'm not able to. Share my video camera and today. I would like to provide you with a brief overview of how we have. Expanded in the Rett Center to Rett variant disorders and. Also provide a brief overview over the clinical research ongoing there. So one component that Dr. Glaze already has mentioned is that we follow. Not only classical. Rett. Individuals in our center, but also. Individuals with Rett variant disorders. And what do I mean by that? It is, those are individuals that show significant amount of signs and symptoms of Rett syndrome, but maybe. Do not fulfill all the criteria. And have some extra signs and features along the red features. So one such red variant disorder is CDKL5 deficiency disorder. It was originally described as the early seizure variant of Rett syndrome. And over time, CDKL5 gene mutations were found in a significant proportion of these individuals. And as the name early seizure variant suggests, it's characterized by a very early onset of seizures. Paige, if you could advance the slide. And in according to the current. Guidelines, classification guidelines. The clinical features that stick out in CDKL5 deficiency disorder are that the individuals. Fulfill some red features. And then have early onset of seizures typically before five months of life already. Which is not necessarily typical for classical Rett syndrome. They can have infantile spasms, have refractory myoclonic seizures. And the seizures oftentimes hit before the onset of regression. In mutations in the, in MECP2 gene, the gene causative of classic Rett syndrome are rarely found. Rather mutations in the CDKL5 gene are typically found. Next slide. So we, we, we started following an increased number of these individuals and were then fortunate enough to. Within the Rett Center found. Multidisciplinary clinic and the Center of Excellence in 2018. That included the clinical disciplines of epilepsy, neurology, gastroenterology, genetics. Physical medicine and rehabilitation, pulmonary medicine, cardiology, orthopedics. And we are now a part of a national network of eight centers of excellence that you can see here at the bottom. Baylor is one of them, Boston, Colorado and others. And we, we, we have been fortunate enough to build this. Center of Excellence through the funding of the CDKL5 Family Foundation, IFCR. Next slide, please. And this is just how it, how our Center of Excellence shows up on, on their website. As you can see, if you as a red parent meet an individual with. This red variant, please send them. To our way, they can again contact Daniela Andreoni at the Rett Center to make an appointment with us. Next slide, please. So through becoming a center of excellence for this red variant disorder. We've been fortunate enough to participate in one of the very first clinical pharmaceutical trials. The Ganaxolon or Marigold study. Which was a study of adjunctive Ganaxolon treatment in children and young adults with CDKL5 deficiency disorder. A double blind placebo controlled phase three clinical trials. Trial that worldwide has enrolled well over 70 patients, I believe, close to 100 actually. Between the ages of two and 21, all of whom had actually mutations in the CDKL5 gene. And the study's primary efficacy endpoint was a reduction in seizures. Secondary measures that they looked at included. Sleep and behavioral features. Next slide, please. And the study was quite successful, actually in, in September. The current month. It was announced that Ganaxolon meets the primary endpoint of their study. Next slide, please. It, so individuals treated with this positive allosteric GABA receptor modulator, the Ganaxolon. Showed a significant reduction in their, in major motor seizure frequency. By 32% compared to 4% in the placebo group. Next slide, please. And then going forward, not only do we participate in pharmaceutical studies, we will also. Participate over the next few years in an NIH National Institutes of Health founded. Multi-center outcome measure study. And why is this important? Well, even in this Ganaxolon Marigold study, not all outcomes were achieved. And in general, it is, there are critical barriers for clinical trials. When individuals undergo treatment trials. And potentially fail. That is, that can be not only due to a lack of the efficacy of the drug alone. But also due to a lack of validated sensitive for the disorder outcome measures. So for this red variant, CDKL5 variant. Some clinical outcome measures can be adapted directly from Rett syndrome, again, speaking to the overlap in the features of those two disorders. But others need to be specifically developed or refined for CDKL5 disorder. And so this NIH multi-center study is underway and will focus on motor, communication, epilepsy, sleep and some other aspects. Next slide, please. Another outcome measure study that we will perform for another red. Well, actually two red variants, namely male Rett-like. Syndrome, if you want to call it that way. And then the inverse condition of MECP2 duplication syndrome. Is the Ionis Pharmaceuticals Biomarker Study. So it is another outcome measure biomarker study. That is, that is currently ongoing. We have just started actually a month ago. It is being performed in anticipation of future upcoming genetic treatments such as antisense oligonucleotide treatment. In the case of the duplication syndrome or other genetic treatment in Rett syndrome. In this case, we need to be able to very safely distinguish when a genetic treatment over or under shoots. You cannot always, the important point being that you can, in, in the case of genetic treatment. You cannot necessarily base your success only on the physical exam or clinical presentation alone. As physical changes or physical appearance may lag significantly behind the changes. That are achieved on a molecular or neurophysiological basis. What that means, or in other words. Basically, if, if you were to introduce a genetic treatment. The individual will not necessarily change overnight and become from, let's say, non-verbal to. Fully speaking individual or an individual that has trouble with mobility. Will not change overnight, even if this treatment is successful. Into an individual that runs around and has full mobility as a neurotypical individual. And so for that purpose, we do need these refined outcome measures or biomarkers. Next slide, please. So the Ionis Biomarker Study. Currently studies 10 individuals each with either duplication syndrome or male, a male red-like presentation. It looks at clinical and developmental presentation for sure. But also looks at biomarkers in blood or cerebrospinal fluid. And then a variety of neurophysiological studies are being performed as well, e.g. polysomnography amongst others. And it is a longitudinal study in that it will look at these measurements. Several times over two years to ascertain that whatever we will find is also a stable marker. To distinguish between duplication syndrome and male Rett syndrome. And that is, that is it from my side. Thank you, Paige.
Thank you very much, Dr. Suter and Dr. Motil and Dr. Glaze. We really greatly appreciate you being with us today. We know that you're on service and you have a lot of appointments and the fact that you took time out of your busy days to. Get our community together and have one conversation about all of the amazing work that you're doing. To provide continuity for our families. With Rett syndrome, CDKL5 deficiency and MECP2 duplication during these challenging times is really very reassuring and we appreciate you being with us. Okay, what I'd like to do now is give you some updates about what those of us at retsyndrome.org have been involved with this summer. And we invite you again, while I'm going through these slides, to please type in any questions for any of our presenters into the question field. And we will address those at the end. Okay, so. As I mentioned, I'm Paige Newey, I'm Director of Family Empowerment and I'm also mother to a beautiful teenager with Rett syndrome. And we have some fantastic state representatives who are also parents of children with Rett syndrome. Who have volunteered their time to be state representatives. Both Danae Hooks and Vanessa Peace couldn't be with us today. But they sent me some messaging to share with you and I look forward to sharing some of that information. Okay, so you all are very familiar with retsyndrome.org. You know that we have a multi-prong mission. That we have not deviated from and we stay ultimately very committed to. Which is accelerating full spectrum research to cure Rett syndrome and empower families with information, knowledge and connectivity. That information, these two. Connecting. Parts of our mission are not mutually exclusive and in fact, you'll see from some of the materials that we brought to you this summer. Are really the intersection of all of the aspects of our mission of advocacy, empowerment and research. In the field of accelerating research, so we know that Rett syndrome was incredibly complex disorder. We have been attacking this for over 30 years in the United States. We've made quite a few advancements. As you've heard from our presenters today, there are so many exciting clinical trials that are underway, which is far beyond what we ever dreamed of even five years ago. But we know that a real treatment and a real success for our children is going to require multiple approaches. We're working on gene therapy, we're working on treatment medications. And we're also very invested in neurohabilitative therapies and I'm very excited to share with you some research that came out of that field. This summer for you. We remain committed to all of these strategies and if you look to our website, you'll see some of the research that we were able to commit to funding this summer. One of the most exciting things that we were able to roll out this summer, despite all of the challenges, we kept going on a planned Rett research ready program. This program is specifically designed for you as families. To assist our clinicians, our researchers, our sponsors and all of the physicians and clinicians. Involved in your child's life and understanding what research is relevant for your child. So this program is a portal, if you will, to information that explains clinical trials. Explains what it means to engage in a trial. What it means to consent to be in a trial. And to help overcome some of the frequently asked questions that are, that we receive on a regular basis. We have short videos, we have materials. All on this section on our website. And a very specific aspect of the Rett Research Ready Program is MyRett Trial Finder. So families are always asking us what trials are currently open, what are enrolling, what is on hold, what's the protocol? Is a child, is an adult, is a male, is a female? Eligible for these trials and the MyRett Trial Finder is to really help us, help simplify that process for you. And also allow you to sign up to receive alerts. Because as time goes on, your child may age into a study or may age out of a study. It's a very nice, simple coding interface with clinicaltrials.gov. So we are agnostic in terms of what research is returned in the search results. We don't have vested interest in the research programs that are returned in those research results. But we can assure you that they all pull from clinicaltrials.gov, which is a really very trusted resource in terms of what research. Is relevant and important for our Rett syndrome community. If you are able to, please join us on October 13th where our Chief Science Officer, Dr. Dominique Pichard. Will be giving us an orientation and a tour of the MyRett Trial Finder. And also explain all of the work and effort and the resource, resources that are available to you with the Rett Research Ready Program. Another arm of our mission is empowering families and we start first with this statement, you are not alone. I'm with the foundation because when my daughter Katie was diagnosed, the foundation was here for me. And it is really an honor for me to be able to pay it forward and to be able to create community, a place of understanding. To create advisory boards, volunteers, a board of directors who are all comprised of parents and friends. Of those diagnosed with Rett syndrome who have walked the journey, who understand the day-to-day challenges that we all face. Whether it's you are a newly diagnosed family, whether your child is a teenager, a young adult or an older adult. We are dedicated to providing all families with the latest information, medical. Funding the most promising research and offering you support and programs such as these remote virtual learning. Sessions while we can't be together in person. We are also completely committed to raising awareness and advocating for all of those living with Rett syndrome. Okay, so what do we have available to you as a family to help you along with your journey? Well, we have the Rett Syndrome Handbook. Which you all know is considered to be almost the bible of Rett syndrome. We have a website, retsyndrome.org. Which is such a rich website with our multi-prong mission of research, empowerment and advocacy, sometimes information can be difficult to find. And that is a reflection of just how deep our information and resources are available for you. So what I'd like to do is take just a very quick look into our website to show you some, a little bit of navigation. We're not going to spend a lot of time. Here, but I do want to show you where specifically. Your state information is. I'm going to use the example of Texas. I know that we have a lot of friends who work here from surrounding states. But let's use Texas as our example. So if we go to the homepage and you click on for families. You'll scroll down and you'll see a lot of different sections on information. For newly diagnosed families to connect with someone personally living with Rett syndrome. We have a lot of downloadable resources on various aspects of Rett syndrome. We have a list of clinical trials, we have a library of recordings, but I'm going to focus right now on their resources. If you click right here on resources. we have access for our families internationally and nationally. But "State Resources" is where I'm going to take you today. If you click on "State Resources," it brings up a map of the United States. And if you scroll around on this map, you'll see every state is clickable, it's interactive. Where you see these icons, you'll find a RET Center. And here we are in Texas with Houston. If you click on Texas, you'll be connected immediately with people who have volunteered their name, their phone number, their email address for you to reach out to with any questions. As you scroll down the page, you'll also find treatment and research centers that we have vetted and are legitimate, knowledgeable places for red syndrome experts. We also have a list of agencies and resources where you can go and apply for waivers and benefits, support, advocacy, IEP help. Most of this information has been sourced by parents. So as you scroll through here, if you see anything that has been of super value for you in the state of Texas that's missing on this page, just let us know. Sam Brant and I are happy to get this onto our website. And Tim Frank, who is our amazing communications director and also father to a beautiful child with red syndrome. You guys are very lucky in the state of Texas that you have some really wonderful adapted resources and places to go and do recreational things, which I hope will become more and more and more available to us as we move through this pandemic. Okay, so that's just a little bit about how to navigate through our website. Again, you can find IEP information. Also, one of the things we have available to you is Angel Awareness Cards. So when you're newly diagnosed and your child is newly diagnosed, you're learning a whole lot of new language. You're learning a whole lot of things that unless you had a health care background prior to her diagnosis or his diagnosis, are really difficult to articulate. An Angel Awareness Card is an amazing resource. It's like a business card. We can print it with the description of red syndrome. We can put a little bit of personal information about your child and his or her picture on that card. And you can have it to hand out when you're at the grocery store or at a restaurant, or you're at a family gathering. And you just kind of want to shortcut the conversation, but you want to leave behind something so that people can engage and go and learn more. What we have found is that people really want to learn more. That sometimes they're uncomfortable asking questions and sometimes that they don't know how to help. But by creating an Angel Awareness Card or starting your own personal webpage, it really will accelerate that conversation and accelerate your ability to spread awareness. Okay, what else have we been up to? So these are some of the standard things. But specifically this summer, we reacted the minute that we heard about COVID-19 and shelter in place. As you know, many of us approach every winter with fear, concern, a strategy of how to keep our children healthy and not being exposed to communicable diseases. So I have to say thumbs up to our families because I think that we were probably better prepared in knowing how to keep our children protected until we knew more about this virus and transmission. But at the time of shelter in place, we knew that many families were suddenly thrust to being at home without their usual therapy, without usual equipment, without your usual educators, without having personal care visit attendance coming into our homes. And what we did was we went around the world and we asked our expert therapists to zoom in live via webcam to some of our families' homes and demonstrate how to do some of the things that we felt were most critical to provide continuity and connectivity for your children. Those resources are still living on our website because they're still relevant today. We live in our homes and we don't want every single waking moment for our child to be a therapeutic moment. But why not learn how to integrate therapy and enrichment activities into their lives? So we have on our website, if you go to redsyndrome.org/covid19/resources, tons of recorded sessions with therapists via webcam showing families how to do aqua therapy in their pool using a pool noodle, how to splash and have fun and yet do some stretching and moving. We have sessions that were about how to do movement, stretches, communication and engagement for the young child between the adult. Their needs change over time. We need to meet them where they are. We need to meet them where we are as parents who might be aging as well with our families. So please go to our website and take a look at those videos. Share them with the therapists who are trying to do teletherapy with your kids right now. I think they'll find a lot of great benefit. We also provided a lot of community updates periodically from Dr. Benkey, who is our medical advisor. His wisdom was gathered by talking to all of the medical directors across the country and around the world to give the best advice about coping with COVID-19 in our environment with our children who could be considered at risk. And his most current message was about returning to school. Lastly, our RET Ed monthly webinars. We have been conducting these for a couple of years. So we had already moved to an online environment, which is the nature of being a rare disorder where you don't have someone necessarily in your own neighborhood or your own town that you can refer to for expert information. So we have an entire library. If you have a deep, if you want a deep dive session on epilepsy or movement disorders or nutrition and GI, many of our speakers from today from Baylor have presented those sessions. All of that library is available to you and is on our website. And we have sessions coming up this month, October 13th. I mentioned that Dr. Dominique Pichard is going to join us to talk about clinical trials and give us a tour of the RET Research Ready Program as well as the My Trial Finder. In November, we have one of the authors of the Communication Guidelines, who is going to speak on that. I'm going to share more about that in a minute. And in December, we're going to talk about vision and red syndrome. We know that CBI, cortical visual impairment, is something that we talk a lot about for CDKL V. But there's not been a lot of information or published information in terms of how that is present or to the degree in which we find it in red syndrome. I'm very pleased to say that in December, we'll have a RET Ed on that topic. Okay, also, your investment, your funding has helped us publish the primary care guidelines. I'm very excited to say that the article "Supporting the Primary Care Guidelines" was published last week. And you can download the Primary Care Guidelines on our website. There's a link to the source, but we have many, many guiding resource guides on our website for care. The Primary Care Guidelines is really intended for you to take to your pediatrician or primary care doctor to go through what are some of the most common symptoms or things that we should be testing for, assessing for, checking in about for red syndrome. And again, that's to accelerate the care for your child without you having to be the absolute expert. So thank you for supporting redsyndrome.org and allowing us to bring these materials to you. Now here, this, my dear friends, is the Red Syndrome Communication Guidelines. So this is the culmination of five or six years of research that you invested in. We worked with a team around the world to produce evidence-based research of the communication abilities of our children. Over 600 people contributed to the development of these guidelines. If you have ever had any resistance from a school district, from a SLP, an AAC person as to the ability of your child to communicate, well, here is your research guide that you can take to them. It's available on our website. It's valued far less than what it costs to print. But thanks to your support, we were able to do this and make this really achievable. We have had so much feedback from actual SLPs and AACs thanking us for this guideline for your children. It talks about the symptoms that are specific to red syndrome that get in the way of their being able to communicate consistently. It also talks about how to do an assessment for your child with red syndrome, no matter how young she is or how old he is. It also talks about how to start doing an assessment for the type of device that might work best for your child. No two children are alike. No two devices are going to work equally as well for them. And it talks about, once you have the device, once you've done the assessment, how to start the intervention. So we really appreciate you're taking the time to get a hold of that and getting these into the hands of the folks who are doing the intervention with your families. We accelerated the printing of this book and we made it available shortly after Shelter in Place. And a lot of families have been using it over the summer. Okay, we've talked a lot about the research. We've talked a lot about empowerment. We've talked a lot about the resources and programs that are here for you, and they've been provided by you. And thank you for your investment. We hope that you enjoy participating during October Red Syndrome Awareness Month. We know that it can be hard to talk about red syndrome, but we also know that nobody cares more about it than us. So we join you on the eve of October Red Syndrome Awareness Month to participate in any way that you can to help raise awareness. We have taken the RET Ride Across America Virtual. And if you would like, it's coming up soon, Saturday, October 3rd. You can join us from wherever you are. You can take your child on his or her adapted bike and take a spin around the block, or you can hop on your Peloton, or you can make any commitment, but visit RET Ride Across America. And that's just one way that you can help contribute to our ongoing mission. We also have taken a virtual gala on, well, we've taken a gala online. For only $50, you can purchase one of these beautiful glasses, fill it with your favorite grape juice, your favorite hops, whatever you'd like, and join us on October 24th at 8:00 p.m. Eastern to hear some stories from some incredible families whose lives have been transformed first by the diagnosis and next by communicating with our families. And lastly, by embracing the hope that is before us with our research progress. So please visit gala.retsyndrome.org and join us. Okay, as we mentioned, Dr. Glaze, thank you so much for procuring the proclamation in the state of great Texas, of the great state of Texas, declaring October Red Syndrome Awareness Month. We hope that you will help us get hashtag #OverPowerRET trending. We started it last year. And what better way than to use social media to raise awareness about your family, your journey? As I mentioned, so many people are only waiting for you to ask. They want to help. We've put up on our website 31 facts. We have awareness merchandise. We have stories. We have videos. We have made it so simple for you to get involved without overcomplicating things. Take our materials, pair them up with your personal stories, and let's get hashtag #OverPowerRET trending, okay? All right, now, what I'd like to do is share some information from Danae Hooks. So Danae is one of your two state reps. She wanted me to share with you today that she has a lot of information. But what she really wants you to focus on is creating your own survival guide for parents and caregivers. She wants you to feel free to reach out to her anytime. Here's her email address, danahooks@outlook.com. You can tell she's a busy parent. She's an author. She's a mother of three. And yet she has found the time to rise above for you because she cares about you. She encourages you to create an All About Me book. We have an example on redsyndrome.org for families living with RET and school. It's a great idea to take this template, insert the personal information about your child, how she regulates herself, what looks like a good day, what looks like a bad day, what are her favorite activities? What are her favorite books and stories and people in her life? If you help accelerate people knowing your child, then they are going to become more connected and engaged and motivated to help her or him. And Danae has shared her All About Me book, and we'll get that up on our website as well. Here's a little fun fact that she wanted to share with you. She created these giant stickers and they give the very essentials. So Hannah has a peanut allergy, for example. She has epilepsy. And she also indicates on these where all of her seizure rescue medications could be found. And she puts these on very specific places, like on her backpack, her wheelchair, on her car seat in her car. So that if there's ever a moment in time where Hannah needs assistance from someone who doesn't know her and Danae is not there to communicate on her behalf, people can help her right away. I showed you where the Texas resources and information are on our website. And for those of you who don't know, Danae is also the author of a beautiful book called "The Adventures of Bug and Boo." And that book is available, proceed, go to retsyndrome.org, a portion of the proceeds. And along with this book, come a wonderful teacher guide. So if you're interested in helping others understand about red syndrome, I think it's very important for siblings and classmates, kids in your neighborhood, to really understand. And what better way through a fun, colorful book along with a teacher guide? So Danae, thank you so much for creating this. I think it's just, it's beautiful and wonderful. And I hope everyone takes advantage of that. So I'm sorry you couldn't be with us today, but thank you for letting me represent you. Okay, I think that's all that I have to share. We have so much more at redsyndrome.org, but those were the highlights. Again, we didn't go dark this summer. Red syndrome never sleeps, and neither do we. So we continued working all summer on your behalf. And I hope that you feel good about the materials, the programs and the resources that are available for you. What I'd like to do is go ahead, I'm going to pause my screen. I'd like to invite our presenters to come back on webcam. We have a series of questions that have been submitted. And let's get going on those. Okay, Dr. Glaze, thank you. There we go. So the slides, Dr. Motil. Okay. All right, and Dr. Suter, we know that your webcam is not working today, and I'm sorry for that. We also, Dr. Glaze, if you'd like to share who else on your team is with us. I know we were having some webcam issues.
So Mariah and Mohamed, if you can tell the people who you're, who you are and what you're about.
Yes, hi. So my name is Mohamed. I am one of the nurses at the RET Center along with Mariah. I have been with the center for a little over two years. And I absolutely love working with not only the staff members, but of course, all you parents and your daughters. And look forward to meeting many more.
All right, I'm Mariah Marco Yezzi. I'm the other RET nurse. I've also been at the RET Center for, again, just over two and a half years. And it's been a great experience being able to work at one of the, well, the premier world-class kind of center for red syndrome. And I've learned a lot as a nurse and have really enjoyed getting to know all of you guys as well.
And I think Daniela is with us. I was hoping they get to see her because they often only get to hear from her. But Daniela?
Yes, hello. This is Daniela Andreoni. I am the RET Coordinator. And I recently joined the team towards the end of January. And I'm very pleased to be working with this fantastic team. And hopefully, in the near future, we can all see each other. Hoping to meet all the parents and all the kiddos.
And Daniela has one other specialty. Daniela, why don't you talk in Spanish to our Hispanic families?
Oh, sí. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Daniela Andreoni. Soy la coordinadora del departamento del RET Center. Y estoy muy contenta de poder asistirlos a ustedes y a su familia. Siempre estoy dispuesta para hablar con ustedes por teléfono o por correo electrónico.
Thank you. We're all very happy to have such talented people on our team. And Paige, if you would like to read the questions or get this session going.
I will. Thank you. And thank you all for being here with us. Mariah, it's great to see you. Mohamed and Daniela, it's great to hear your voices. And I know that you mean so much to the families. I can't tell you how often I hear from families after they've visited your center. And they have felt so welcomed and supported and comforted by all of you. So I'll just share that. Now, the questions that have come in pretty much hit every aspect of the world of red syndrome. So they're not in any particular order. I'm going to take them So, uh, they're not in any particular order, I'm going to take them in order that they were submitted. Dr. Motil, you get the first question of the day. Okay, so our question is, Dr. Motil, why do girls with Rett Syndrome have so much gas in their guts? And remember, we have a lot of questions for everybody in the next 15 minutes. I know you could do an entire session on this one.
To be brief, gas, the gastrointestinal tract, often is caused from what we call aeroaphasia or swallowing air. The girls swallow air because they grind their teeth, they hyperventilate, they hold breath. Many times the air is primarily in the stomach, so for those girls who have a button, if we pop the button and give the tummy a gentle push, you can totally deflate the swelling, uh, from the air, but it quickly recumulates. Otherwise, the air does pass on down through the gastrointestinal tract and I have yet to figure out why it doesn't necessarily move through during the course of the day. Except to say that perhaps the girls are swallowing air faster than they are able to toot it loose. Um, there are other reasons why children can have increased gas. The two or three that I focus on when I'm seeing the girls is number one, for those girls who have celiac disease, which is an intolerance to gluten or the grains in breads, for example, you could have this type of disease and have a lot of gas. And so there are times when we may investigate celiac disease. Number two, uh, small bowel bacterial overgrowth. For reasons that are not always clear, but sometimes are clear, the bacteria in the gastrointestinal tract may proliferate to a higher degree in the small intestinal tract. And if they do, they can produce a lot of gas in the small intestinal tract and cause discomfort. In that case, uh, there are some tests that can be done to determine whether your child has small bowel bacterial overgrowth. But many times we just simply treat with a very specific antibiotic to see if we can help resolve the bloating that the girls have. And last but not least, the most important thing that everyone needs to be aware about is the fact that if you have poorly managed constipation, the bugs sit down in the bottom of the rectum and they are just happy as a clam and producing as much gas as they feel comfortable and you end up having a very gassy child. So it becomes very important to pay attention to bowel habits that your child has. And if there seems to be a particular problem in this area, then we need to begin appropriate treatment. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Motil. Okay, let's move on to another question. And, uh, Dr. Glaze, we have a question. If you have seen any children with COVID and are you familiar with their response to treatments?
I think the most interesting, um, part of this, of this question is that we've seen so few children who've tested positive for COVID, uh, virus. Uh, in our experience of the many hundreds of girls and boys that we have seen in the clinic, we only have about five patients who actually tested positive. Two of those patients were actually hospitalized. So, yeah. For some reason, we don't see a lot of COVID. It is probably due to the fact that the parents are very good about social distancing, doing good hand washing, face mask, all the things that you need to do to prevent the spread of the COVID virus. Dr. Suter has recently been on service and I would ask him to speak to his experience with COVID-19 and in individuals with Rett Syndrome.
Sure, it is definitely not extensive, so I concur with your assessment that, um, we have not encountered many children with Rett Syndrome that were COVID positive. I am following, uh, one individual who unfortunately is very, um, has been hit very hard by COVID, but I'm not sure that that is specific to Rett Syndrome or rather, um, relates to, um, COVID in general. This individual has developed, um, COVID pneumonia and rather severe pneumonia. But I have, um, also encountered an individual, um, who participated in a research trial and was found to be COVID positive simply by the fact that the research trial necessitated COVID testing, which, um, goes to show that it was only incidentally discovered and she has not developed complications related to COVID at all. That is basically what I can contribute, but I think Dr. Glaze, may be aware of more individual in, in total, um, in Rett Syndrome who have developed, um, COVID-related issues. Thank you.
So, my, um, understanding and experience would suggest COVID doesn't, isn't different whether you have Rett Syndrome or, or typically developing child. Number two, we actually test everyone that comes to the sleep lab for COVID and I've been surprised that the vast majority, in fact, with few exceptions, the children have been asymptomatic. So I think it is a different disease in children, young children, and they can be asymptomatic and never develop the problems. However, I think as a parent of a child with Rett Syndrome, you still, you need to do the basic things, again, practice social distancing, practice good hand washing, do the things that prevent the spread of the, of, of COVID. Number two, I think the individual with COVID, whether they have Rett Syndrome or anything else, is going to be aggressively treated as Dr. Suter has indicated, that they still get aggressive treatment with expectations that they have a very good chance of recovery with that aggressive treatment. And so just because you have Rett Syndrome doesn't mean you don't get the usual treatment or that you shouldn't seek out, uh, medical care, possibly hospitalization if your child is symptomatic.
Thank you, Dr. Glaze, thank you, Dr. Suter. And I can say that your experience at your center mirrors what we've been hearing from other centers across the country and around the world. So I applaud all of our families who've, I think, been taking the precautions, keeping your kids safe. And, uh, we are still in this and we hope that this trajectory continues of few positivities, mostly asymptomatic positivities, and for those who, um, are symptomatic, a swift recovery. And I know that they are in the best care in your hands. So thank you very much, Dr. Suter, for taking care of this child. Okay, we have some more questions in the queue and they are a little bit more, um, common to what we hear at our Texas camps and our Rett days and our conferences. The next question is, uh, from, uh, grandparents. They have a three-year-old granddaughter with Rett Syndrome. She'll be four in December and she is currently receiving PT, OT and speech and they're wondering if there's anything more that they can or should be doing with her.
Uh, Paige, perhaps we can let Mariah and Mohammed address that they see many patients and are greatly involved in therapies that they receive. Perhaps, Mariah, you could address this question from your experience.
Sure, um, PT, OT and speech, definitely a great start. Um, I would say one thing that I think is important for most of our, our Rett kiddos is to have physical medicine onboard to kind of help direct, um, what they're doing in PT to address any equipment or bracing needs. Um, on top of those three types of therapy, also, uh, additional therapies like horseback riding or water aquatherapy are really helpful, um, to help with balance and core strength, um, as well as music therapy, um, and consistency, I think. And I know, uh, sometimes we really have to fight for those kiddos, so we often will write letters in supportive therapy. Um, so work with your Rett team, um, to make sure you're maximizing what you can get out of the available therapies. And Mohammed, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No, you said it perfectly, actually. I was just going to say the other therapies that typically we do hear from parents, um, of course, um, horseback therapy and then of course, um, aquatherapy have actually garnered great results for a lot of our individuals. And, um, that in combination with PT, OT and speech, um, we've seen many of our girls make, uh, strong strides in accomplishing certain goals that they set out for and then of course pushing them past those limits.
Oh, and I will just add one more thing about speech is that you need to find a therapist, um, whose goal is beyond getting your girls to speak because that's not always something that our girls are going to achieve or our kiddos are going to achieve. Um, but in general, we think of it as communication therapy. So whether that's with I-Gays, with pictures or a device, um, those are some of the things you should strive to work for and not just focus on getting the child to speak. Um, and again, we would happily write letters in support to kind of explain, um, the communication piece to any therapists or providers that need a little bit more information.
One other point I would make is, I've been impressed, uh, that, uh, we see really good results when these therapies are started as early as possible, whether that be communication therapy, other motor type therapies and those kind of things. Second is, give it some time, don't get disappointed or upset that you don't see all, you know, marked improvement, uh, the second week of the therapy. It may take some time and it will come along. And I always like to tell the story of a number of the girls who weren't walking, underwent aquatherapy and after several years, actually were able to walk after that therapy was instituted. So keep up with your therapies, uh, and I, I think that you'll be rewarded for that. Dr. Motil, I'm sorry I interrupted you, go ahead.
That's fine, I just wanted to also clarify one additional point. Many of the girls would benefit from feeding therapy. Depending on what part of the country you live in, your feeding therapist may actually be occupational therapist, but in other places, they may actually be speech therapist. And I do think it is important for parents to be aware of the fact that someone should also be working with the feeding therapies, the use of the chewing and the swallowing. Because again, to your point, Dr. Glaze, if you don't use it, you lose it. So no progress is not a bad thing. It simply means that you have achieved your potential and you must insist that these therapies for feeding skills continue or you're going to lose them.
Great, thank you. I think you all have, uh, great insights into what helps and I encourage everyone to avail yourselves of the resources, the handbook, the communication guidelines, everything that can accelerate understanding of Rett Syndrome with the therapists that are working with your children. So whether it's OT, PT, speech, feeding, um, early intervention, there's a standard process by which all of these professionals are trained to work with people with developmental disabilities, but there are things that are very unique to Rett Syndrome. And if they understand that reflux might be causing crying or screaming, we can get that addressed and then she can move on with communication. If we understand that non-verbal, that verbal speech might be problematic, they can accelerate getting access to switches and devices and an alternative means of communication. So that would be my biggest advice. And the other piece of advice is for, um, you as grandparents to continue to be involved with your granddaughter. I love hearing that and thank you for writing in that question because when the whole family is involved, from grandparents to siblings, it takes burden off of the parents, they can be refreshed and restored in being parents. And it also really, um, lightens and brightens, uh, the child with Rett Syndrome's life to have so many people surrounding her or him with love. So thank you for, uh, writing in as a grandparent, I love that. Um, let's go to the other end of the, uh, age spectrum. We have a question here about life expectancy for an adult who is ambulatory and does not have any respiratory problems. Do you have any expectations for life expectancy for people who are in this healthy category of Rett Syndrome?
My expectations are they should probably live beyond even what I'm going to accomplish at this point. I mean, we expect, uh, those individuals with good care, with attention to their problems, to live well into their 40s, 50s and 60s. So I, I think, again, our program and all programs need to be directed towards that expectation of ensuring a healthy life, uh, quality of life, uh, for, uh, for the individual. I think the problem that we're dealing with and I don't, I don't know, it's the right word, that it's a problem. But what has come up is, as daughters and sons ages, especially as daughters age and become 40 or 50, their parents typically are 20, 30 years older than that. And it becomes a matter of ensuring the health of the elderly parent as well as the, uh, aging daughter. And I think this is a real challenge to us and, and really does need to be addressed. And perhaps either, again, Mariah or Mohammed can address that issue.
Yeah, um, absolutely. I think there was another question that was kind of related to this. And, um, we don't, well, we don't have anybody specifically in terms of lawyers that we recommend, but any lawyer in the state that's familiar with guardianship, uh, wills and inheritance can help you. Um, but there is one firm, uh, the Siler Mitby Firm, that we know the founders actually have a child with Rett Syndrome and they have helped a lot of our families get those legal things in order. Um, but the guardianship is an important piece to kind of start thinking about, uh, once your child is getting into the teenage years so that you can remain in control of what happens to them, um, as they become adults. Because in the state of Texas, um, legally, they would be competent, not competent, but in a position where they would be making their own decisions, although we know that they're not able to. So it just helps reduce, um, any distress or red tape that you might run into if it come, if you come into a situation where there's a question as to who would make decisions for your child. Um, Mohammed?
Uh, no, actually, I, I think you said it perfectly. Um, of course, the, uh, point of contact that we do refer out to is the Silers, um, in situations like this. But of course, um, at any time, if you guys have questions, concerns, um, don't hesitate to reach out to our office. Uh, the least we can do is even if we don't have the answer right away, we will definitely, um, put forth the effort to try and help you out because we are all into this, in this together and we, we definitely want to be there for you guys, um, every step of the way.
Thank you, we're so grateful to you. Okay, so we are, we are nearing, uh, the end of our time together, but I have two more questions in the queue that I think that, uh, we'd like to attack while you are here on cam. So, uh, Dr. Glaze and Dr. Suter, these are neurologic in nature. Um, if you can, again, in a second, in a minute or less, describe, um, a Rett episode. We have a parent who, um, their child has episodes, they look like seizures, they clinically look like, um, all the symptoms of a seizure, but on the video EEG, there is no indication that it is a seizure. Do you have any suggestions on what they can do to stop or lessen these, um, events? And do you have any thoughts of the uncontrolled events having long-term effects?
So I'm going to defer this to Dr. Suter, but I wanted to give them a commercial here. Dr. Suter is established, a specialty clinic for- Dr. Suter is established, a specialty clinic for those patients with seizures, especially difficult to control seizures, so that alternative therapies like ketogenic diet and vagus nerve stimulator, new medications would be available to them. And so, Dr. Suter, may you have comments on this question?
I think Dr. Suter had to return to round because he's on service. So I'm not sure he's still with us.
Okay, I'll pick up on. It's it's has been a real recognized problem that you have to differentiate between actual epileptic seizures and non-epileptic seizures. This came to our attention when we started doing video EEG recordings with recording of the actual behavior. And and learned that many of the episodes presumed to be seizures turned out to be non-epileptic behaviors. They may be related to motor problems, autonomic dysfunction, and and so forth. It's important to determine that in order that you can guide what is appropriate therapy. Continue to use anti-epileptic drugs. Increases the chances of potential side effects as you increase the drugs, as you use drugs in combination. And so you want to be sure that they are appropriate. And if not appropriate, manage the correct physiological occurrence. Again, many of them are autonomic dysfunction related or related to motor problems. As far as the long term consequences, I think it's more in the case of avoiding the overuse of antiepileptic drugs, avoiding and misunderstanding what the episodes are and misconceptions of what the outcome is. Many children who have these Rett-like behaviors or adults who have these Rett-like behaviors actually have a fairly good prognosis and and do well when you keep those things in mind.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Glaze. Okay, we have another question about how to help our children get through puberty, particularly excessive bleeding, pain during that time of the month, and change in seizures. I would like to refer everybody to a Red Ed webcast that was delivered by Jane Lane, who gives extensive information about to handle how to handle that, which is a very natural part of aging. And in Rett syndrome, we are fortunate enough, and I'm going to say this, we are fortunate enough to have that happen regularly. So it's a natural part of growth. We have a lot of information. I don't know that we have the time today to go into that, but we do have a nice hour long webcast on that topic. We do have one question about behaviors. And I'm not sure if anyone would like to answer this because I think this is really problematic for some of our kids. We have one child who gets so worked up that she does a lot of head banging, which can cause self injury to herself. And how do we do intervention for her? And we have another child who experiences a lot of OCD behavior, is changing her shirt all day, which can be problematic at school, can be very, very frustrating for both herself and her families. For our kids who have a high anxiety, high behaviors, have hand function, do you have any advice for these parents about how they can go about getting some intervention and support?
So I think there are two sides to this question is directly what's available, what can be done for the behaviors like the OCD, the repetitive stereotypic type behaviors. But the second component is evaluating underlying medical problems that might worsen or be the actual cause or if you treat those. And I would ask that Dr. Montiel maybe comment on what are the medical issues that you need to look for when you see these behaviors, when you see anxiety coming up or screaming episodes, those kind of things?
I think the two most common things that occur when we have marked irrit, well, I'll take that back, three things. When we have marked irritability, when we have screaming episodes, the other one would be some nighttime awakening without an obvious reason and irritability of the child of being unable to be consoled. One is that we can see gastroesophageal reflux in this type of situation. At times, it's simply reflux in and of itself. But at other times, it can also be problems with delayed tummy emptying gastroparesis, which also aggravates reflux. The second problem, of course, in our older girls, we know that the girls can have biliary tract disease. We can see pronounced irritability with gallstones, of course. But we also have had girls who have simply the biliary dyskinesia or the poor motility of the gallbladder cause some of this irritability type behavior. And last but not least, of course, again, constipation, we know is present in at least 80% of our girls. Most of the time, if you are certainly my patients, you know, we focus on it a lot and we try to be sure we're managing carefully at the problems of bowel habits. However, there are times when, for whatever reason, the girls do seem to become obstipated and they seem to have a problem with really poor evacuation of the stool. And this in and of itself can also cause a lot of discomfort, pain with defecation and just a feeling of discomfort and vomiting for that matter. So I think those are the three big underlying gastrointestinal features. Again, other things like excuse me, a tooth problem or perhaps an unexpected fracture.
So again, I would suggest that the problem has to be approached in this way that you look for medical problems that might be causing the the behavioral issues. I, you know, I don't think all the anxiety drug that you might want to use will resolve gastroesophageal reflux and just may mask it. So I think it's important to keep in mind that other issues may be going on. Also to address what is the impact on the family? And and hopefully help you address in an appropriate way the issue and possibly use medications as well as behavioral approaches. We have a number of medications that might help lessen the severity of these types of behaviors. But again, it may be also a combination of behavioral approaches to addressing these issues.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I know we've gone over our expected time today, but these were very important, very good questions submitted by our parents and grandparents. And the information that you all had to share really was incredible. I'm so impressed at how much work that you have accomplished over the last six months, the last six years, the last decades of your work and commitment to to Rett syndrome. Thank you so much. If you'd like, you could go ahead and turn off your webcams, get yourself something to drink. I'm going to do some closing remarks. I hope that we'll see you again soon. You know, my last business trip was to Houston in February of 2020, and it was such a treat for me to get to see you in person. And I know that we'll get to see you again soon. So thank you very much, Dr. Glaze, Dr. Montiel, Dr. Suter, Mariah, Mohammed, Diana. Daniela, thank you for being with us today.
We want to thank you and all the families who are listening to this webcast there while we're here. And let me just emphasize, we actually learn all that we know from the families and and they make our lives much more enjoyable and worthwhile. Thank you all.
And thank you. Have a very good day. Thank you for being with us. In closing, I'd like to thank our sponsors, Neuron Pharmaceuticals, Greenwich Biosciences, and Acadia Pharmaceuticals. They believe that the education and empowerment and connectivity of our community is just as important to get through today as it is to their commitment to ongoing research. So we really appreciate their partnership and their sponsorship. In closing today, I want to share my thoughts that you are not alone. Even though we can't be together in person, we can be together in so many ways, virtually, through social media, in our collective commitment to raising awareness during October Awareness Month. I hope you know that people around the globe are working on behalf of you and your beautiful children. I hope that helps you sleep better at night. And I hope that motivates you to rise above the challenges in your own home and join in all of the community efforts to create a world without Rett syndrome. Thanks for being with us today. You'll receive a link to the recording. Share it with families that you know couldn't make it with us today. If you have any further questions, we're not going away. You know how to reach me, drop me an email, drop any of us on staff or on our board or at your clinic at Texas Children's Hospital, an email or a phone call. We're here for you. Take care, be well, and we'll talk to you all again soon. Join us on October 13th to hear more from our chief science officer, Dr. Dominique Pichard. Thank you and goodbye.